All right, so second meeting of the month. We do not have a treasurer's report tonight, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, anything you want to add?
No, I think big thing going on right now is this state funding. It's with the senate. Thank you everyone who has reached out to us, state senators or the representatives to talk about the 30% cap. That's the big thing. Next meeting, I'll be presenting the five-year forecast and that will show like what impact a 30% cap can have on our funding, like how early we'll have to go for a levy. So that's the big thing. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move into correspondence. Does anybody have anything for the good of the board, especially something that maybe all of us didn't see?
I do. I actually, you know, on the same subject, I met with Brian Lampton on Tuesday. I had never met him, so I wanted to tell him some of the things we were doing. He was very happy with our parents' bill of rights and I explained our problems with the 30% cap and how, you know, normally we get extra money at the beginning of a levy and we save it for the years when our expenses have gone up and the levies remain flat. And he really seemed to understand that and, you know, I explained just other concerns we had. And like, he seemed like a great guy and really understood it. And he said for me to be sure to reach out to the senators because it's in the senate and I have. I haven't heard from him yet, but I know you guys have all been reaching out to the senators. And I told him, you know, we'd happily not rely on property taxes. So we'd love to not rely on property taxes. So you guys can come up with something else. So anyway, I told him how we felt about that and he seemed to understand.
Yeah, I met with Senator Kayler and with other Greene County superintendents a couple of weeks ago and so expressed those same kind of, same kind of concerns about that cap of not wanting any cap. He gave the impression that there was going to be some type of cap. But again, it's still early in the process for the senate, for the senate part of that. But again, first time I had met him, nice guy, but we will see what happens with voting and so forth for, for this particular part of the budget bill. Again, they're trying to make a dramatic change in, in the ways that, you know, with this 30% and so forth and trying to shove that into a budget bill rather than taking some time looking at it, see what the impact of it would be and doing some studying on it. So we know it would have a huge impact on us, negative impact, as with other school districts.
Any other correspondence? All right, so we'll move into tonight's reports to the board first. We'd like to welcome Mr. Adam Romali. Thank you so much for being here, sir. Mr. Romali?
Looks like the microphone is on, so I'll go ahead and continue. First of all, thank you as always. It's my pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. There, as you're aware of, there are three courses in the middle school and three in the high school that the Greene County Career Center sponsors from a satellite effort. And over the past year, there's been about 1,500 students between those, taking advantage of those courses. So the career centers, you know, it's not only at the career center, but it's also here for satellite programs. And they're always looking for opportunities to collaborate with the school district if there's other, you know, courses they'd be interested in and creating other satellite programs. So I just wanted to raise that to your attention. There were also over 40 Bellbrook students were on the honor roll this quarter, you know, did a great job. And two students in particular, the 2025 Skills USA Ohio State Championship. So that's where the kids compete in a variety of areas. And two Bellbrook students, Maddie Swan and Tyler Gondek, placed fourth in the state in robotics and automation. So, you know, it just kind of gives you an idea of the quality of the students and, and what they get from, you know, the opportunities there at the career center. Couple other notes, senior recognition night will be May 13th at seven o'clock at the Nutter Center. So if anybody wants to come out to the Nutter Center. And then the last day of school is May 22nd. And then the last thing that I just want to, saw an interesting thing out at the career center and I know that Beaver Creek takes advantage of it. You know, it's just something I want to bring to your attention. They hold a mock prom every year with the special needs students and the, like the cosmetology students and some of the instructors and some of the physical fitness instructors where they will help the, the special needs students with getting dressed up and doing their hair and doing their makeup and then teaching them how to dance and having a mock prom so that when the real proms come up, these kids have the confidence and the ability to participate. And I thought that was an interesting thing and I just wanted to highlight that to the board's attention. So I think that, you know, I've never been long-winded and I'm not going to start now. So do you have any questions?
When you were talking about opportunities for satellite programs, when we met with the city and the township the last time, and we're getting ready to do it again, week after next, they had talked about, and I, I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember if, if it was the police training or the fire training program that had been canceled for the year due to lack of registrants?
Right, yes.
And we talked about trying to find something that gets students interested in those career paths earlier.
Yes.
That in the township and the city, we're both seem really enthused about that. And I think even Mrs. Hull was there, she seemed kind of enthused, oh, there you are, sorry, I didn't even see you come in, enthused about that. So I don't know if that's, if that's an area where we can try to start generating some, I know there's demand for those careers in the world. There hasn't been a lot of demand for that program at the career center, as I understand of it.
Right.
So maybe we can start trying to generate some demand at younger levels.
Yeah, I can take that back. I can absolutely take that back to the board and talk about how do we, you know, I know they have some criminal justice, you know, they have some courses there at the career center, but you're talking about how do you get that, you know, can we increase enrollment? How do we gain enthusiasm and then highlight the career, you know, the, you know, the firefighters, the EMTs, as well as the police that do do adult education at the career center. And so, yeah, I can absolutely take that back. Sure. Anything else? Going once, going twice? Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate you very much, as always. All right, up next, we would like to welcome our Stephen Bell principal, Mrs. Ginger Keaton. Thank you for hosting us tonight. Always fun to come to the different buildings.
Good evening for our community tonight and school board. Welcome to Stephen Bell Elementary. And as you can tell, our team is presenting tonight because at Stephen Bell, grades K1 and 2, we are definitely a team. So tonight we have Jennifer Huff, kindergarten teacher, first grade teacher Sarah Ross, and second grade teacher Rachel Barker, as well as our assistant principal Heather Hebrink. So tonight, we're going to just walk you through a few slides as we would like to highlight how Stephen Bell has soared throughout the school year. And it does say our year in flight. And we would like to just celebrate the different ways that Stephen Bell has just really taken off and launched in different ways that are unique this school year. So first of all, we'd like to celebrate and honor the fact that our school board has allowed us to have the very first, go ahead and click it, okay. Assistant principal ever at Stephen Bell Elementary. So thank you so very much. Now that we have an assistant principal in Heather Hebrink, fabulous pictures as you could tell, not only from her school picture to the activities of, did we have pie in the face? We sure did. Our school assembly, the boys and girls love seeing Heather and I partaking in an activity at the SOAR assembly where the children participated. And she even dressed up as Talon and the golden tickets which we'll highlight. So we have the opportunity to serve in a different way because traditionally, having 550 students in the building, it's been me. And the students have been accustomed to just having a principal. Our other three buildings have had the luxury of having an assistant principal. And so now this year, I know how that feels. And thank you so very much. Because the students and the staff, and I know the staff would agree, we've all benefited from having another administrator in the building who has been able to assess and evaluate teachers. When I have classified and certified teachers, about 50 of them between certified teachers and classified staff members, now we can divide and conquer. And when you have over 500 students in the building, you can imagine the quality that we're now able to accomplish together. So we are definitely thinking we, not just me. So from a principal's perspective, I wanted to make sure that I properly thank you once again for allowing us to have another administrator in the building. It has made the world of difference to have Mrs. Hebrink in our building. And I also want to make sure that you hear from a teacher's point of view, the difference it has made to have the very first assistant principal in our building.
I'm Rachel Barker. Thank you all for being here tonight. And I'm excited to share the teacher perspective as well as the student perspective on having the first ever assistant principal, Mrs. Hebrink. And from a teacher perspective, it's just been awesome. Just like Ginger said, thank you so much for supporting this. Stephen Bell has always rocked, but now it's like even a little more elevated because we have more boots on the ground, more help. For the teachers, there's just, there's more support. And it's been really great to see both the principal and the assistant principal just so visible in the building. So some mornings, Mrs. Keaton might pop into your room to say good morning to your class. Other mornings, it might be Mrs. Hebrink. It just feels very seamless. That's been awesome. Another thing that's been great is Ginger is obviously amazing and awesome. But with having the assistant principal, Heather's been able to do things that one principal couldn't do alone. So she's been able to start, kind of spearhead our PBIS tier-two team, which has never happened before. She's going to highlight on that a little bit later. That's been really cool to see. And also, just some new opportunities with PBIS. We're, should we're going for our bronze award, which is super exciting. So we've always put a lot of work into our PBIS team and Heather recognized that and thought, we're already doing the work, why shouldn't we try and get recognized for that? And so just more opportunities for our staff that both of them can provide. My favorite perspective, though, is the student perspective. I had a lot of fun gathering this information. So I have the unique position that I have a first grader in the building and he happens to love Mrs. Hebrink. So I asked him with very little prompting, Luca, what do you think about having two principals in the building? Last year in kindergarten, we just had one principal. This year, we have two. What would you say about Mrs. Hebrink? And he said, direct quote, "Mrs. Hebrink is nice and gives good hugs. Two is better than one. When Mrs. Keaton can't help, Mrs. Hebrink can." I also asked my class for some insight and they shared things like, when Mrs. Keaton is somewhere else, Mrs. Hebrink can help. They love the live announcements. And sometimes when Ginger isn't there, we'll use the old school system over the intercom. But sometimes when Heather can chime in, they like that she can also do the live announcements. Two that I thought were funny were was when people are being naughty in the building, if there's two people being naughty at the same time, then Mrs. Hebrink can handle one while Mrs. Keaton handles the other. So they're very aware of the presence. And the last one that I liked was that it's more people to keep us safe, which that is, Stephen, that has always been Ginger's priority at Stephen Bell is the safety of our students and the success of our students. And having a principal and an assistant principal is just another way to make sure that happens. So thank you, Heather, and thank you, Ginger. And thank you, board.
Thank you. That was great.
Nothing like standing there being talked about. So we had the awesome opportunity to do a kindergarten kickoff, which was new this school year. And really, we kind of looked at it as what is the why, what is our why? And we had these little five-year-olds, some of them four-year-olds coming, going to be five-year-olds, coming into our building and they were so anxious and nervous and wouldn't talk. And were just, you know, like just little quiet little people. And they, we wanted to give them a face to a name. We wanted to give them the opportunity to see us, to know, hey, they are kind of nice there and be excited about coming to their new school. So that's what we really wanted to do. We really wanted to help our youngest little kids start off on the right foot and know that Stephen Bell was a great place. It's a fun place. It's a place where they're going to be loved and be safe. So that's kind of our why of why we started it. It was definitely a team effort. Our entire office staff and a couple of teachers kind of helped out. We even had a parent, one of our parent volunteers that helps in our PBIS team. She was able to come and kind of introduce and help introduce the SOAR shop to the, to the families. And that is a huge hit, obviously, at our school. They each received a little backpack and you can kind of see it up there in the picture with Mrs. Keaton, that had a Bellbrook Bee on it with some fun little pencils, stickers, little, you know, Play-Doh, things that per fine, I mean, in our teacher mind, you know, they're actually educational, but in their mind, they're fun. So, you know, we just wanted to get some things in their hands. And again, just kind of excite them about coming to kindergarten. We also did a SOAR shop and golden hopper, like I mentioned before, with one of our parent volunteers. So we had them actually get their very first golden ticket. They wrote their name on it. Every 15 minutes, we would spin the golden hopper, pull out a name, and then they would get to draw from one of the SOAR carts. So they were just loving it. And they would, every time the little horn would go off, they'd get really excited about it. So it was super fun. We did kind of like a signing night, kind of like a college signing you would have, but with the 2037 at the bottom and we had a huge pencil. And so they, they thought it was great. It was really, really cute. And the families really enjoyed that. And that's a memory that they could have when their kiddos graduate. And then kind of to look ahead, what we can do for next year, we also conduct a kindergarten, kindergarten scavenger hunt. And so we're looking to see how we can kind of get creative and maybe combine that event so that we can get families in the building and then maybe even in the, in the back of the building. We were trying to kind of break it up this year and see like, you know, how's this going to go? But we really feel like there could be an opportunity to combine those two events just to help with that comfort level, get them back in the building a little more. They also have an open house with their teacher. It's a one-on-one open house for 45 minutes. So they do get the opportunity before school starts, but maybe that would even make them a little more comfortable. So this was a great event. It was a new event and we found it to be very, very successful. Thank you.
Can I ask, when was that? Like, was it right before school?
It was August.
Okay.
It was the week before the breach.
Okay, yeah.
And Heather is correct. It was a new launch because we wanted to help reduce the students' anxiety.
That sounds fantastic.
We'll definitely bring it back.
Hello, good evening. My name is Sarah Ross, for those of you who don't know me. I'm in my ninth year of teaching first grade at Stephen Bell. I'd like to start off tonight by mentioning that this is the first time we have ever had 10 first grade teachers. It has been wonderful, and so I'd just like to start by saying thank you. It has created class sizes to be very small, and we're reaching those small group of students in order to have their educational skills be met in that, in that way. And then I'd like to just take a moment to rattle off a few first grade traditions that we love to continue at Stephen Bell. We are so thankful to continue our tradition of taking a field trip to Victoria Theater every year. This year, we got to go see Alice in Wonderland. The children love to go there and experience and see how tall and high and beautiful the ceilings are, and they love seeing the stage actors as well. So, that's a wonderful tradition that we loved to continue. As well as continuing our tradition to have the first graders perform in a first grade musical with Susan Gard. She has always done such a wonderful job. She will be very missed, but we're very excited to continue that tradition as we move into next year with someone new. We also are looking forward here soon this year to continuing a tradition of hosting Camp Skeeter in first grade, where the teachers pretend to be camp counselors and the students are campers at school for the week. We all get together, we rotate, everyone gets to go to each other's classrooms and do different camp-themed activities. We do indoor things, outdoor things, hopefully as long as the weather is nice. And it's just a wonderful memory for first grade teachers to have, first grade students to have, as well as hopefully the families when they go home and share their excitement. So, just a lot of wonderful things in first grade I wanted to highlight. Thank you.
The reason we wanted to make sure that we properly thanked you for keeping the class sizes low in primary grades, because it has made a difference in our scores, which we will share later in another slide. As we move into PBIS Tier One, Mrs. Barker and I wanted to highlight what's going on. Tier One is for all students. And a few years ago, our PBIS team walked you through. Tier One. Tonight, this is just a high overview of what's going on with the SOAR shop, or what's happening with some of the changes. SOAR shop is where the children have an opportunity to save their golden tickets, and they can purchase items at the end of the month for what they want. Great thing to learn in life. And also, they have the opportunity to take their golden tickets and put them in the hopper. Take the chance. Will your golden ticket be chosen during the live announcements? Because we choose five a day. The Golden Hopper prizes daily are never offered in the SOAR shop. They're special, they're unique. So some children, I know Mrs. Barker has children that put all their tickets in the hopper and barely have any at the SOAR shop. But this year, we added something unique, because the SOAR shop is getting really expensive to purchase those items that children wanted. So, our PBIS team, very creative teachers, and a parent who serves on that committee, came up with experiences. Luckily, our district is committed to focus three language, and that language of doing the right thing, soaring together, and pursuing excellence. Teaching five to eight-year-olds how to understand that language, they understand, it's your choice, they get a good one, they do understand that. And that relates to doing the right thing. But it's really hard for them to understand pursuing excellence. So, we kept teaching them, think "we," not "me." And we said, okay, an experience would cost 200 tickets. And if a child would say, I don't have 200 tickets, well, could you get classmates to work with you? And before you know it, what was happening in your classes, Barker? So, it took me one student will say, I really want to do classes with the principals, or sores with the third or some, and they would kind of start off by saying, I'm willing to give 50 of my tickets. Well, that's...
We're getting close to that 200, and while some students might only want to donate five tickets, other students might be willing to donate 10 or 15. And then, it really gives the teachers the opportunity to have that conversation, think "we," not "me." Because sometimes you have a few students who are like, I don't, I don't really want to give my tickets towards that, but the whole class benefits. So then it opens up that conversation for that Focus Three language of, you know, could you spare five tickets so that the whole class can benefit from this experience? And it's just great, because some of the experiences are spent with Heather and Ginger, our school counselor did an experience, sometimes the teachers offer an experience. I always offer lunch with a teacher. I joked at a meeting last month, I think I've made it too fun, my class keeps buying it. So, but it is, it's just a unique way to offer them an experience at very little cost to Stephen Bell, while still rewarding their behavior and tying in that Focus Three language as often as we can. The other way that we try to tie in Focus Three is, first of all, I should say, I love Focus Three, so it feels a little bit like a passion for me. And Carrie France also serves on our PBIS Tier One Committee, and she and I work really hard, PBIS meets once a month, every, or when, the first Wednesday of the month. And Carrie and I work really hard during those meetings to kind of bring up Focus Three, ways that we can align the Focus Three language and our, the beliefs that our district has adopted, and tying that into PBIS. And one way that we do that is we try to create fun documents for the students, or optional for the teachers to use. The next one coming up will be a SOAR reflection. So it's, it's an opportunity for the students to reflect on the ways that they have soared this year, which ties into that pursuing excellence, soaring together, doing the right thing, just so that we can keep that language going as they progress and get older, doing the best we can at such a young level to promote that language. And I think we're doing a really good job with it.
Yes, and they're, probably their top two favorite experiences, and how do I know this, because so many of them purchased it, the recess monitors. And I would say our SRO and our lunch aid monitors, the adults have so enjoyed. We had over 80 children, right here, they are at the top left, they had their safety vest on, we had a monogrammed recess monitor, they had a walkie-talkie. It was hysterical. I was their lead, we would go out, we had kindergarten group, and they were talking to each other, and then I would say, okay, monitors on the blacktop, are the children making good choices? Oh, yes, Mrs. Keaton, I got your back. And then the next thing I would hear, child down, child down in the mulch, what do we do? Oh dear, get an adult to help you. And then second graders, Mrs. Keaton, I see a child going up the slide, that is not a good choice. Okay, how should we handle that? I'm going to go tell them. Great choice. So, it was hysterical. The whole office staff was cracking up, listening to these monitors, talk to each other, communicate to each other, how they wanted to approach their peer, how they wanted to handle the situation. And then at the end, I would say, recess monitors, the bell has rung, come back to the office, return your walkie-talkies, return your vest. Before you would know it, 10 of them were flying to the office, like eagles flocking together. It was the best thing. And so we offered that twice this year, of course, weather was a factor. But then, we offered the SOAR servers. Our cafeteria staff, seducto, got involved. So I purchased aprons, and we monogrammed SOAR servers. And I cannot wait to send them to Henry Conte and have them posted, because these children were walking around the cafeteria. Can I help you open your ketchup? Did you throw away your trash? Oh, you need an apple, you're not having a healthy lunch. I mean, they were doing the job of the cafeteria. We had a student helping at the cashier. Mrs. Davis was helping them. Did you type in your number? You don't have your ID right, you need to retype that. I was standing in the background going, oh my goodness. It was the best. And then the next month, when the SOAR server wasn't offered, the children would walk up and say, where's the SOAR server? And I said, oh, I'm so sorry, you know, Mrs. Hebrink and I run the shop, and it's not being offered this time. And they would go, what? Not being offered? And I said, well, just like a store, it's not here this time. And they're like, will it be offered next month? And I said, maybe. So, we've got them hooked. And they're wanting the experiences. So, we just wanted to share how we launched something different this year.
I feel like there's a couple sitcoms in the making for some of mine.
I am very happy to say that our Tier One program is going so well. We definitely have over 90% of our students successful at that Tier One level, which as you can see is well above the average or the norm. Typically speaking, success is seeing that 80%, if you look at that MTSS triangle there. So we're really excited to be well above that 90% area, and really focusing in on how can we support our students' behaviors who just need a little extra, and who need a little extra support, and what can we do as a staff to support those students. So, as you can see, for year one implementation, this was our first year as we started, we began the check-in, checkout system with students. So, the SOAR behavior is our check-in, checkout framework that all of our teachers are using and all of our students are using. So it's consistent. And really trying to model that after DIT, and what we're doing kind of as a district at looking at practice and keeping that consistent. So our K to 12 is really focusing on how can we be consistent with the way we attack behaviors within our school. So, the really awesome part about that is, students get to pick who do you want to be your check-in, checkout person. It could be Mrs. Tensher, it could be your old kindergarten teacher, it could be a second grade teacher that you might have next year. It really could be anyone that you want in the building. It's someone that the student connects with, it's someone that the student has a relationship with. So it's obviously someone that that student wants to please. For example, I have a first grader who's going to a second grade teacher right now who she really likes, and that's who she checks in with in the morning. And then at the afternoon, she takes her smiley face paper back to her second, the second grade teacher, and they check in, they talk about their day. I know you can't see, it's probably too small, but they set goals every day. What's my goal for the day? What do I want to accomplish? What SOAR behavior do I need to work on? So it's a super reflective way and option for the students to reflect on their own behavior, have conversations about their behaviors, and then have the goal set for them with that adult that they are very close with, to be able to be successful through the day. And I will say, because I do bus to be at the end of the day, they all come running out of the building, and they want to tell me, Mrs. Hebrink, I met my goal today, I got a da-da-da, or, I got to go play soccer on the playground with, you know, Mrs. so-and-so. So, it's just really great to see them making those connections and wanting to be successful, because these are some of our most at-risk students when it comes to behavior. So as you can see, based on our data, we have been collecting data as we've used, and so that's really important to track, is this successful or not? And as you can see, 84% of the time, our Tier Two students are meeting the behavior goal of 70%, our better expected behavior. So, we feel like that is very successful. We're definitely seeing a lot of progress with our students, and I know teachers in CIA meetings have been sharing, like, wow, like, you wouldn't think a smiley face could make that much of a difference. But, again, it's that constant check-in, oh, okay, we're getting ready to go into reading, you can do this, you told me that your goal is to show SOAR behavior in respect today, so we're gonna be respectful to our teacher, and we're gonna be respectful to our friends. So it's just that constant reminder, and that constant affirmation for them of what they're doing, and then, obviously, if they're not successful in that moment, then able to be reflective and kind of turn the day around versus something happening and then not being able to turn it around. They still have the opportunity to earn more smiley faces. So, we've been working really hard to try and get staff members who want to be involved in that, and students who want to be involved in that, if they pick a teacher, we went to the teacher and said, do you want to do this? And I haven't had one teacher yet that has told me, no, I won't, I don't want to help. So, we have an awesome staff, who's always so willing to step in in any way, shape, or form, and help out with helping any student be successful, whether that be their own or someone else's. So, that has been really cool to see. Our goals for next year, obviously, as we look at tier, stepping into year two, we are really looking at possibly launching some social skills groups. So, you know, maybe students who struggle with anxiety, maybe two or three of those students can come together in the morning and kind of do a check-in, checkout system, but not maybe this way, it looks a little different. Maybe, you know, two or three students are having some playground or friendship issues, we can pull them in and do kind of a check-in and a checkout at the end of the day, just to, again, kind of have that reflection. We definitely want to start next year with our check-in and checkout system in place, and our Tier Two team in place. And just continue to build that consistency, and continue to build and strengthen that Tier Two group and processes, how students get into the Tier Two process. So really just kind of continuing to streamline that process, learn from year one, and then how we can improve in year two. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also gonna speak a little bit tonight about DIT, the District Implementation Team, as a relationship with BIT, the Building Implementation Team. From Stephen Bell, I serve on both of those committees, due to the fact that a teacher representative from each building also then serves on the district team. I'm a first-year member of the district team, and I believe a third-year member of the building team. During both DIT and BIT meetings, it has been really nice to follow a pre-made, organized schedule and rolling agenda each time, in order to accomplish many tasks. A lot of those topics are often the same from meeting to meeting, which also contributes to building upon previous conversations, and then continuing them to watch them grow. These are some of the sections that have been recurring. Data is always recurring throughout the year in many ways. It started off with a book study on a book called Data Into Action. We took that and then talked about it at DIT, but then we're able to take that back to our own buildings, and then apply it to ourselves and to our own staff and students. As we've moved in, into the year, and the book study has finished, it has just been nice to continue to speak about all kinds of student data in relation to map data and many other things as well. Another recurring topic has been the implementation of the newly adopted ELA curriculum. So it's been nice to just have that continuous on each agenda so that we can bring up positives, what are we struggling with, what's going well, just a time to sit down and talk about those things together and work through them. Another thing that is being brought up is something called the Initiative Review Process, or IRP. This is a new process that was talked about at DIT, and now is being trickled down to BIT. The trickle-down and up of communication has also been wonderful. The IRP is a process of how staff members could request a new curriculum, or practice, or framework, or program, and just the steps to go through that process with fidelity so that everyone in the district is on the same page. Let's see. And I spoke a little bit on that communication plan of the trickle-down from the DIT to the BIT, and then to teacher teams, but then it's also nice that it's vice versa, and it builds its way back up from teacher teams, then they go to their building, and then it can come to the district as well. So, that's the smooth part about that, and I think someone else may give a little bit more insight into the BIT as well.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Huff. I teach kindergarten for a very long time. I am a member of the Building Implementation Team, the BIT, I am the kindergarten representative. We meet monthly, sometimes before school and after school, and we always look at our agenda first. But having our DIT, which is like your big picture, and then your DIT, which brings it down to the building, as a DIT, as a BIT member, I take that information back to my grade level, which really helps our administration with messaging. They, they don't have to do a lot with having to sit down all the time. It's helpful to have this small group of staff members that can provide leadership roles, to provide feedback for what we need. If I have someone in my grade level who has a concern or needs something, I can always, they can approach anybody, but we can always take it back and talk about it in the Building Implementation Team. And then we can share during our TBT time, which is teacher-based teams. A lot of times, our TBTs meet during our early dismissals, or late arrivals, or even our PD days. And those are valuable times when we can really go through what's happening in the grade level, what's coming up, what do we need to work on, and of course, we talk about our data as well. And this helps with unified messaging to all staff members, and they know that it's coming from our Building Implementation Team. And we had a lot of new staff this year. And we had a lot of new staff this year. And so that was really helpful to have extra people supporting the new staff members when they had a question about what was happening because it's a big change when you've not been in a building before or you've been in a different building and they do things different ways. So it's been a really good transition and I really enjoy being on the Building Implementation Team. It's been fun.
Another new launch for us this year has been the launch of our new ELA curriculum, Wit and Wisdom. This has actually been a K-5 launch, which is kind of cool because most of the time, I feel like our new curriculums are K-2, specific to our building. But I know this is something that's happening at K-5. So I just want to share a little bit about what that program is and what it looks like because it is new. Anytime you adopt a new curriculum, there can be some big feelings around that because it's a change for your teachers and for the staff. It's been, it has been a very heavy lift. I can say that because I'm going through it. But it has also shown a lot of perseverance and excitement from teachers, really wanting to do our best in using this program to its full potential and with fidelity. And it's been a very all-hands approach. Lots of support from Ginger and Heather for collaboration and teacher-based team times when we're able to have those to really make sure we understand the curriculum. So if you're not familiar with it, the idea is you have four modules. Each grade level has four modules that have these big key kind of themes and ideas. And then each, within each module, you have an essential question. You work that whole module kind of answering that essential question. So right now, I'm in Module Three with my class and our essential question is, "How can people respond to injustice?" This has by far been my favorite module, Module Three. I don't know if that's just because I'm learning the curriculum, so I'm like deeper into it, or because I do love the topic. So it really lends itself to some really great discussion with the students and the responses. You also have a focus question, which is kind of like, if you think of like a big picture as your essential question and then smaller is your focus question, that takes a few lessons to kind of answer that question. And then you have like a daily kind of focus. And so Wit and Wisdom is constantly having your students kind of look at the big picture, but then also zooming in on something smaller. Within that, we have focus question tasks. These are writing passages, so lots of writing, lots of paragraph writing. This is true for kindergarten, first, and second. And I haven't talked to anybody in third, fourth, and fifth, but my son is in third grade. So I have that unique experience to kind of see that it looks very similar for him, just a little deeper, which makes sense because he's older. So it's been cool as a second grade teacher to see like what's coming in third grade. That's been really nice to see kind of how that flows. And it's really fun too to see from the students what modules they like. So you kind of have to, you know, decide how much you want to put into each module because there's lots of different things you can do. And so some of the modules, they're kind of like ready to get through, but other modules like Module Three that we're in right now, I feel like they could be in that one forever. So that's been really fun. Because it was a new curriculum, we were able to go observe another school who's been teaching the curriculum. So our ELA team was offered that opportunity and they got to go and then come back and bring the knowledge they learned from those observations to share with their grade level teams. And then Ginger and Heather were great about asking if anybody else wanted to go and see beyond the ELA team, they were offered that opportunity as well. I would say the biggest thing I wanted to say is a shout-out to all of the teachers and teams who are adopting a new curriculum. It requires so much collaboration for a successful implementation. And I know for me, for my second grade team, we meet once a week for forty-five minutes discussing the lessons for the next week. And when you're in a curriculum that you've had for a long time, you don't necessarily have to do that anymore because you know the curriculum, you understand it. With a new curriculum, you really have to dive in and get a really strong understanding of that. And so shout-out to all the teachers who are K-5 implementing Wit and Wisdom. I know the hard work that they're doing for that and the support that we're getting from our principals to do that. And with that, I will say that our data looks great. There's another slide coming, so I don't want to say too much. But the data for reading does look awesome and a huge part of that is successful implementation along with all of the other wonderful things that teachers are always doing regardless of the curriculum. So, thank you.
Okay, so something new we started this year is having sensory breaks. We have been lucky enough that we have some staff that can help pull kids for up to ten to fifteen minutes of a break, maybe once a day, maybe twice a day. The sensory room is actually kindergarten commons that we took and put partitions up. So we have kind of a more quieter sensory space. We have more of an obstacle course-type sensory space. That also doubles as the section for our adaptive PE when they're there once a week. So we kind of call it the sensory room, motor room, sensory break, and students who might need some additional regulation or just a break from the classroom. And it's also something they really look forward to. When they know it's their sensory break time, that's something they can almost kind of work towards. And we have some friends who maybe don't go regularly, but they get to earn it as a reward. Or if they're having a moment and they need to go into that room, it's a great space to have for just a calm-down time. So part of it is, like I said, the more active part, the obstacle course where they kind of follow through and do little more gross motor-type activities. And then the quieter space is I've walked by there several times and I'll see kids coloring or playing with sand, very quiet, calm activities. They might be sitting on the floor. They might be sitting on one of the bouncy balls. They might just need a timeout just to sit and do nothing. And it's really been a great space. There's also, yeah, oh, the bottom, the bottom right corner. We put those up. They're called Spot of Feelings. And the kids can kind of go in. And even if they can't verbalize exactly how they're feeling at that moment, they might go to point to how they're feeling. And I have a friend who goes in there sometimes and he will just toggle through each feeling and what it means. And sometimes he's able to identify how he's feeling and sometimes he's not, but it calms him down to know that these are feelings that he has and that they're, it's okay to have those type of feelings. So we have lots of fidgets, lots and lots of hands-on stuff, coloring, puzzles, games. The kids learn to recognize when they might need a sensory break and we'll ask them if they need one, or they'll say, "I need a sensory break," or "I need a break." And we try to really implement that as we can. They can return to class and they're calmer, we hope, and more focused. And then I have observed, when I have a student who has to go in there or when they ask to go in there, we want them to go, they come back and they're much calmer and they're much ready, more ready to learn. And kindergarten especially, and first and second grade too, you're constantly changing activities every ten to fifteen to twenty minutes. And sometimes they just need a little bit more of another break that gives them some movement time, that they don't have to sit and wait and sit and be quiet. And so it's really been a nice thing to have the sensory room, that space available to us this year.
And I will add, they are with an adult at all times. They don't just go to the sensory room. "Hey, I need a break, Mrs. Hebrink." There is a schedule. And so Mrs. Hebrink and I have built that schedule. So they are always with an adult. So this brings us to a wow opportunity. And last year, I had the pleasure of sharing the science of reading with you and also the spring data. I'm back. And I'm thrilled to share with you that with everything that we have launched this year, I hope you've noticed that kindergarten made it over the line. That has yet to happen at Stephen Bell Elementary. So raise the roof. And thank you to our school board for all the wonderful opportunities that you've afforded to us. Because Wit and Wisdom was a heavy launch and K-5 teachers are doing the work. And you invested in our teachers. You invested in our children. And Foundations was a heavy lift as well. Once again, you made that investment in us. G-O's was also a heavy lift and a big purchase. So thank you to our school board for believing in our teachers and our students to do it. Because with that ELA suite, we have a full package. And I've been the building principal here for now eighteen years and it has been a wonderful journey. I have never seen such a difference in our reading and our writing, our decoding and our encoding is the strongest I've ever seen it. Our school psychologist, Jenna Sandlin, she has said to Mrs. Hebrink and I, "Wow, I see a huge difference in what's happening with our five-to-eight-year-olds. I'm excited to what Dr. Monroe will see at BCI, to what Mr. Klein is going to see at Bellebrook Middle School. I am so excited for these children's future and that is because of the investment that you're pouring into our children." So I'm very proud of what is on that screen. I know some people don't get excited about data, but Mrs. Keaton does. Don't I? And so you can't see it from your screen, but there's a little S above where it says first grade. The S means school. So it's kindergarten, high growth, high achievement, first grade and second grade, high growth, high achievement. First and second grade traditionally get there, but kindergarten has not. And we've always struggled with that because, well, what are the variables? We have two different programs. We have so many other variables. We didn't have a full ELA package. There are a lot of variables that we could look at. But what we do know is that we're launching so many great things that are now happening in our school. We'd like to think those variables are making a difference. So the next screen, you can just break it down and really see what's happening by the percentiles and those bands. So you can see where the growth and the achievement is falling and I won't read that to you. So to wrap everything up, learning must be fun, especially for adults and children. So we are going to end the year on the Fun Run exploration. And yesterday and today and tomorrow, we are highlighting the classes with one-hundred percent registration for the Fun Run. The pizza party is a registration challenge. So Ms. Caro's class tomorrow, Ms. Weeks's class, we'll find out in first grade, and Mrs. Kreider's class in second grade have earned their pizza party. And then the Dunk Tank could be an option if we hit that Tier Two. Which teacher or teachers will be in the Dunk Tank? Will Talon come back for Tier One? Who will be Talon? I don't know. It might not be Mrs. Hebrink this year. It could be the real Talon. And then, two years ago, we had the very first Fun Run that came to the district because PTO has been so amazing. But PTO kind of hung up its hat for the big donation because they were doing so much. They needed the schools to step up a little bit more, happy to help. And so we raised over twenty thousand dollars. BCI said, "How did you do that?" I shared the information. BCI also did it. And then last year, it rained on our Fun Run. Well, rain's not going to stop us. We turned it into a Glow Run here in the gym. This year, it will be the first event, if we're lucky, that families will be on-site. And we're doing it alone. The Booster, my Booster people are not coming. So we're going to launch it and we've hired DJ Debbie Schwederman to come and help us. And so we're going to do it together and we're really looking forward to that May eighth event. So board members, if you want to come and be part of the fun, you are certainly welcome. And we just want to, once again, publicly thank our school board and our superintendent for always supporting us. And Mrs. Hebrink and I feel very blessed to lead this school and work with so many amazing staff, students, and families. Any questions?
Mr. Kinsey has volunteered for the Dunk Tank. And, and...
You heard that publicly.
And only staff members are permitted to dunk him for five dollars a throw.
And I heard a pledge.
Thank you so much. It seems like you're doing such an amazing job with the kids and it seems like, you know, getting them on the right track. And at Stephen Bell, we'll set them up for just success at all the other schools. So, sounds absolutely wonderful. Great job.
And I have the honor of being their liaison. And the things that are going on in this building, I am in awe of their staff. Their staff is just, shows up every day with a smile. These two are constantly after dark in the parking lot, leaving at night. I do monitor that. They are working so hard and I'm so appreciative. And just to share a little bit, I got to go to the Learning Tree Farm with the second grade kids because I have a second grader. And those kids were making connections from their classroom material to what our Learning Tree Farm leader was saying. They would say, "Oh, we learned about that. We learned about that." It was really interesting to see it come to life in front of them. So thank you to your staff. They are just knocking it out of the park, so.
And the Fun Run funds those field trips. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for your leadership, your leadership and teacher leadership also. Just it's a team effort, so a lot of great things going on. And I think as Dr. Pryor said a second ago, of just building that foundation, it just gets everybody off, gets everybody off on the right step. So we do appreciate that. Thank you very much for all of your hard work and all of your staff's hard work.
You get to do what you love. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, for our next report to the board, we would like to welcome up Mr. Jeff Eckley, our manager of business. Thank you for being here, sir.
Absolutely. As a former middle school administrator, I would like to thank the staff of Stephen Bell for creating such an outstanding foundation for our kids. I've seen it firsthand for twenty-six years as the middle school, in the middle school. And you send us just quality kids that have a love of learning and it's great to work with them. So thank you for all you do. My presentation tonight is on some permanent improvement projects. And basically, it has, many of these projects, well, all of these projects, have come out of the facilities and safety committees that these people are all a member. I'm not going to read their names, but I do want to publicly thank all of them for meeting with us several times a year just so we can review what's going on in our buildings, the needs of our buildings. And like I said, the projects that you're going to see here in a minute have all come out of these two committees. District-wide, we were able to, we had a need. We had a purchase of a new maintenance truck and a plow. A couple of exciting things that are coming to the high school. We are going to build a walkway that's going to connect the front lot to the south lot because we have a lot of people that transport back and forth. Also for big events at the high school, that's going to help with parking, not having to walk across the grass. And there's also going to be a connection from the front lot to the bike path. So just, it's been on their list for a while, so it's going to really help to improve that. We are also replacing the paint and siding. That actually got started today on the backside of the pool barn, just kind of updating our look of our school a little bit. Some of the other things, and two coming out of our safety committee was the installation of safety film in our sensitive areas throughout the district. This product was designed to limit visibility and to make windows shatterproof so that if a bad actor was trying to enter, this would slow them down and allow our students and staff to get to safe places. If you've had the opportunity to be at our stadium and use our facilities out there at the stadium, you'll understand the need for updating and remodeling those. So that is going to take place this summer. We are also resurfacing the lot in front of St. Pierre Education Center. One of the problems that we run into is on the rainy days or the cold days, traffic backs up, okay? Dr. Monroe can attest to this. So we needed to resurface that. What we're going to do is flip that lot a little bit and kind of, we are going all Chick-fil-A. We're going to have three lines of traffic. That's all going to go in and we're going to get people off the road so those of us that do live in the community can still get up and down Upper Bellebrook Road, okay? Even at, you know, you know how it is. If you're there the wrong time... If you're there the wrong time of the day, you really don't like it. So, we're going to get traffic off the road by creating three lanes of traffic within our parking lots. There we go. Here at Stephen Bell, one of the things I, first things that I took on as the manager of business, we put in three drainage tiles out here in our playground. We took out the wood mulch that was there and replaced it with rubber mulch. And my understanding is that it provides the kids more access to it. It used to be with the wood mulch, if it rained today, they probably couldn't get out there for the next day or two. Now, as long as it's not actively raining, we can go outside, okay? Because it drains much, much better. We are also resurfacing and filling the cracks, eliminate some trip hazards on the playground right out back. Moving on to BCI, thank you to our Lions Club, who took on the project of Eagle Land Two last summer. In order to secure that area, we have put in a sliding gate that now secures that area. And we're going to direct people in our community. If you still want to use our stadium during the day, you can. You just need to go around the north side. And there's new signage that's on its way that will direct them around the north side of the St. Pierre Education Facility, so that they can still get back to the stadium. But they are not walking through BCI's recess, creating unsafe situations. We are also going to be resurfacing the, some of the parking lots in front of BCI as well, and creating a new playground area, hopefully with a grant that one of our teachers, Mrs. Taylor, has, is securing. At the middle school, building's starting to show a little bit of age in that it is, some of the floors are cracking, the linoium's coming up. So, we are having that replaced over the summer. We have had a great partnership with Crossroads Church, which has been with us for eight years. That was a rental thing. They have actually just opened their own facility at the old Sears Building out at the Dayton Mall. And they have moved out. They have their first Easter ceremony out there at that facility. As a parting gift, they gave to the middle school $10,000, which we were able to turn around. And then, using a third of Mrs. Hill's principal's account and some PI money, we can get that sign, which is just, living in the community, it's just, it bothers me driving by that. It doesn't work. So, the top two portions, the messaging part and the static sign up top, are being replaced. The bricks on the bottom are going to stay. It's going to be on that same platform in the same place. But it'll be much nicer. It's all going to be wireless, and it will run.
Is it going to have an eagle instead of a crow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Moving on to our high school, some of the improvements we made, say, coming out of our safety committee. On the auditorium side, those doors were glass. Those have been replaced by metal. The transaction window, when you first come into the high school, it used to be just open. Now, it is all the way down and has like a little pass-through. And in addition to that, we are, have on order a black wrought iron fence that'll have our nice script "B," which will go primarily from the edge of the office over to the auditorium side, which will allow our high school kids and staff go out there during lunch. So, it'll allow them to be in that spot, and it'll secure that area for them as well. One of the bigger things that's kind of more of a, you don't really see it, but you'd feel it, is we are in the process of a bid process with heapy engineering to replace a chiller in the back. I don't know if you can really see it, but there's a huge bulge in that one. There are two chillers in the back of the high school. For about the last year or two, only one of them has been running. So, if the other one goes down, there's no air in the high school. So, that's going to make learning difficult when it gets so hot. So, we are getting that chiller replaced over the summer. That process is working on right now. Thank you to Mr. Goddard, who's helping us with the bid process. That's going out to bid here in the spring. It should be worked on through the fall, and probably by, by the end of this calendar year, it should be replaced. So, we should be back up and running and efficient. Some of the future projects that we are looking at, as we talked a couple of times already about finances, our bus fleet is getting older. We have seven buses that are from 2007. The state recommendations are that a bus stay on the road for about 10 years of service, and then it can serve for five years. All of our buses, every bus, is inspected twice a year. Once as a scheduled, once as a non-scheduled inspection. And all of our buses have passed. I do want to take a moment just to thank the excellent work led by Lori Smith, Mark Linkart, TJ Lawhorn, and all of our drivers, who take such good care of our buses that allow us to get more miles out of them, okay? These are buses that our kids are using and riding on. The average age of our bus fleet is eight years. And a new bus is $138,000 if it comes fully equipped. That's with radios and the arm and all that stuff that has to happen. So, that's one thing to keep in mind. It is in a projected forecast, okay? We have all these things laid out, like, in a couple of years, we buy this many buses, then we'll buy that many buses. So, you have that as part of your information. But we do need to kind of be thinking about those things as we move forward. The chillers, we also have older chillers at BCI. They were replaced in 2006, so obviously, they are getting to be 20 years old. The average life of a chiller is 15 to 20 years. We have repaired it three times in the last five years. Every time you, when you repair a chiller, there's a product in there that chills the water, turns it into ice, called glycol. It has to be removed to do maintenance. That's an additional expense. So, it is, those are getting older. It's something to consider that we maybe have to do in the near future. We have a similar situation right here in this very building. Again, those were replaced in 2006. Life expectancy is 15 to 20 years. It is a heat pump situation right now, where it is air-cooled. We'd like to look into switching that to a water-cooled unit. It's more efficient, okay? So, we could see lower energy bills. In addition, it lasts an additional 10 years. So, a water-cooled unit could go for 20 to 30 years. And you can see the cost. We are not yet out to the bid process on that as well. But it is something to keep in mind as we talk about future finances. And then, the Board of Education Office of the St. Pierre Education Center, it has two units on the top. The one on the preschool side is operating great. It's only eight years old. The one above, the administrative side, is 30-plus years old. It has been serviced multiple times, from what I understand. Like, they've jumped over, like, this compressor doesn't work, so we'll swing it over to this compressor. And it's, it's been serviced several times. Let's leave it at that. So, that might be an additional cost that could happen in the next couple of years. And then, additional information that you should know, much like your car, okay? When your car runs out of warranty, you don't automatically go out and buy a new car. But you should be aware that the high school roof, its warranty will expire next year, okay? The middle school's roof is in two years, okay? BCI and Stephen Bell, their roofs, part of their roofs are, a roof warranty is usually about 15 years or so. It's all that Durlass product that's across all of our roofs. It's a great product, can be patched. But like I said, just because it's out of warranty doesn't mean we have that huge expense that we have to do. But it is something to keep in mind as we continue to look, of being fiscally responsible for our district. And finally, I would just like to say, you know, after being a part of the Bellebrook family for many years and stepping away for a year, I really appreciate the opportunity to come back. I'm loving what I'm doing. It's great to be back around educators and hear great things that they're doing. I love doing it three days a week, because I am actually trying to get better at golf. But it is, it has been wonderful to be a part of it, and I appreciate you guys letting me be back on the team.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
And it's probably a stupid question, but make sure I'm not misassuming. Title slide says, "Permanent Improvement Projects." Would everything in here come out of permanent improvement funds?
Yes.
Okay. So, not planning for, I think my battery's going to...
All right. I can change my battery here in a minute. But I didn't know if anything out of here was planning to come out of general fund or permanent improvement funds.
The projected projects down the road, as you can see, it kind of, we kind of have to time them out so that we don't use up all of the permanent improvement money that we have per year, okay? But we have, Dr. Cozad and Mr. Goddard and I have sat down, and we have a yearly budget that we're kind of trying to spread out, okay? That has been one of the things. I'm pretty fiscally conservative myself. I don't like to spend money. I like to try to fix things. So, but yeah, we do have all those things kind of laid out in a budget as we move forward for the next seven years.
Yeah, we have about $900,000 a year or so in the PI fund. And so, you know, when you get into these big expenses and then you try to do normal kind of maintenance things, the money goes really fast, especially if you have a four or $500,000, four or $500,000 chiller or something, and then you try to do all these other things. As our buildings are getting older, you know, our newest building is 2006. So, again, if you've, you have a house that's 20 years old, 10, 20-years-old things start going out. And so, we're kind of in that situation with a lot of our, a lot of our items that we're really having to, the roofs and everything else, that in the next few years, there could be quite a few costs. And so, we're going to try to obviously push those out and be smart, but push them out as far as possible if things are going okay. But those are things that are kind of looming there after us, as they're sitting there. We don't have enough, we don't have enough money to do all this stuff out of permanent improvement unless we can really push out some things further out.
Yeah, that's, I guess, just my only ask is, please be sure to make it be front and center of what comes out of permanent improvement, what comes out of general fund for us, just so we don't miss that. Thank you so much for what you do. I mean, I've had the opportunity, especially with a lot of the safety improvements. I see your dedication, your attention to detail, the hard work that you put in. So glad you're willing to serve in this role. So, thank you for everything you're doing.
Absolutely.
Thanks. I would echo that. Mr. Eckley's doing a fantastic job. He's taken on a lot of work and getting a lot of stuff done, as you can tell from this presentation. We're keeping him busy, and I appreciate him.
I think we were the lucky ones, that you were willing to come back.
Yes, definitely.
All right. We are ready to move into our board committee reports. We do a few times a year. So, I'm up first, OSBA Legislative Liaison. There's always a flurry of things going around. I usually try not to bring for us to discuss if something is really early in the process. Obviously, the big topic that everybody's talking about is proposed state budget-type stuff. We spent quite a bit of time at the last meeting talking about that a little bit here. I don't have anything new to bring, and if we want to talk about it, we can. But I know I've personally reached out to Senator Kohler. It was early last week, and I did hear back after a few days from one of his legislative aides thanking me for the contact and saying she would pass the information along. And I've requested a meeting, so we'll see if that happens. But I think my big takeaway, and certainly what I put in the contact, was, you know, just wanting some clarity around a district such as ours.
I'll have to pause and change my batteries here in a minute, but thank you, sir. Some clarity, make sure that I fully understand. A district such as ours that has really put an emphasis on fiscal responsibility and wanting to be very careful. I know we've said it many, many times, that one of our primary goals is that when the community voted years ago to bless our schools with seven years' worth of levy money, that that money needs to last at least seven years. The longer the better, while properly providing for the wonderful education that happens. But if it lasts less than seven years, that's a huge failure. So, it would be disheartening here, as we've been executing that really well-thought-out plan, to find out that all of our hard work and responsible decisions will get punished. So, that was the key thing that I wanted to stress and talk about with everybody. Other than that, I don't, I don't really have anything else that we haven't talked about before.
So, if nothing else, we can move on and talk about the OSBA Capital Conference and Student Achievement with Mrs. Anderson.
Okay, yeah. Capital Conference this year will be November 16th through the 18th. That's always a good time of learning. I know I enjoy going. Student Achievement Fair is going to be happening Monday, November 17th, as part of the Capitol Conference. We usually have one of, one or more of our groups that are always approved. So, if any of the groups would like to go, there are three categories. There is the digital art show. That deadline is October 24th. Performing groups, the deadline is coming up May 14th. If we have any groups that would like to perform, that deadline is May 14th. And then, we have the regular initiatives and district programs. That deadline is October 24th. So, if anybody's interested, reach out to Dr. Cozad, and it's anybody K-12, so let me know.
All right. Dr. Pryor, how are things going with the BSCF?
All right. So, the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Education Foundation met on March 7th, and we gave three teacher grants out. There was $1,200 to Mr. Lambright for the drone, drone team equipment. And they gave Bellebrook Middle School money to pay for the district and State Science Day entry fees for any students who were moving on from the school science day. And they gave some money to Stephen Bell, $1,000, for some sensory items for that, most likely the fun sensory room they showed us, or, you know, whatever they keep in various classrooms. So, that was really nice. And the BSCF has two fundraisers coming up. We are very soon, probably this weekend, at the Sugar Maple Festival. You can check out our, the wonderful shirts there, hanging from the basketball hoop. Class of whatever shirts. So, you can buy your kid a class shirt for whenever they're graduating, and they're very, very cool pattern. So, that'll be a fundraiser for BSCF. And there's also going to be a school garage sale on June 14th. So, you know, random old desks, desks and interesting items that are no longer needed by the school. So, anyway, that will be, that's fun. That's the fundraisers we do to, you know, provide for the teacher grants. That's about it. But it's a great group, and we do still want new members if anyone's interested.
Dr. Pryor, I did get a question from some alumni groups. Who would like to have that? Is that a possibility?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, any year can be printed on it? They didn't want to look dumb ordering shirts if it was from like previous groups.
Yes, I think, is that true?
Lots of alumni.
That is true. We are kicking this off at the Sugar Maple Festival. And you should see in several, if you have been downtown, a big thank you to a lot of our businesses who allowed us to put our advertisement up there. And it's just as simple as clicking on a QR code, and it asks you on the order form which year you would like to have in there. As far as our alumni groups, we do have a minimum of 13.
Okay.
So, if, tell them to get with their classmates, you know, or your buddies, and you can all order shirts. I know from a distance, it's kind of hard to see. Those are the three colors that we have, but I encourage you to take a closer look at them, because each one is very unique. It has all the different double logos on it and things like that. It's in an all-over print, so it's all over the shirt, it's down the sleeves and things like that, front and back. And they are on sale for $26. Like I said, all the proceeds are going to teacher grants. And I'm proud to say that last year, BSCF was able to sponsor every teacher grant that was presented to us. So, we'd like to continue that process, and this is what we're using to fund those teacher grants. So, it all goes back to the kids, and it's hopefully something that's a little bit unique and different, and hopefully it kind of takes off. Like I said, it's getting kicked off at Sugar Maple Festival. There's QR codes all over. It'll take you right to the order form.
Thank you. That's all.
Anything else?
No.
Cool. Mr. Price is not able to be here tonight to talk to the financial advisory safety committees. I don't know, if Dr. Cozad, you had anything, or just move along? Get a report maybe at a future time?
And really, some of the things that were covered in Mr. Eckley's...
Your mic's bad.
Some of the items that were covered in Mr. Eckley's presentation involve safety we discussed also during our safety meeting.
Great. All right. And last on our list is our Active Shooter Response Team Implementation Committee. I do not believe we have anything new. Everything is going excellent, so. All right. Anybody got anything else before we move into our open communication period? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Nobody signed up? All right, very good. So now we will move into the Superintendent's Report.
Yep. Thank you. Um, so new business here, Certified License and Employment Resignation, Resignation Lee of Absence Supplemental Duty. Um, that is, so 6A, B, and C, uh, and D will be in a consent agenda for 6E. And so, um, resignation of Mrs. Seiler at the end of the school year and then also welcoming our new high school science teacher, Mrs. Savage. And then B, uh, administrative central office employment resignation leave of absence. And so, um, our psych intern and then our, our school principals. And I'll, once everybody's approved, I'll talk about Mr. Klein in just a second. And then support staff, um, Rod Smith resigning at the end of, end of June. And then also substitute employment there. So that is all 6E, so 6A through D is E Approval Consent Agenda.
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Dorn, seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Any other discussion?
I'll talk after.
Yeah. Please call the roll.
Mrs. And, excuse me. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Four yeses.
Motion passes.
All right. Mr. Hand, you want to introduce? Yep.
I'd like to introduce Kelly Savage. Kelly comes to us from Clinton Massey High School. Uh, nine years experience in classroom and um, she's a nice combination. She also not only is this ton of classroom work in, in the business as well, biochemistry and things like that. She's probably physical science to honor physics and CCB chemistry. She's gonna be a great addition to Bellbrook team and also the science department. So really excited about it.
Thank you. Excited to be here. Looking forward to it.
Welcome. Welcome. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, and then, um, Mr. Klein?
Mr. Klein is our new middle school principal, Bellbrook Middle School Principal. He has spent the last year and a half as BCI Assistant Principal and then a couple of years as Assistant Principal at Myhensburg High School and then at the middle school teaching for 25, 26, somewhere in that range.
Long time.
Close that. At the middle school level there at Myhensburg. So, we had a real strong candidate interview, interview pool. Um, Klein emerges as the top candidate, so strong leadership skills, building relationships is, is key for, for Mr. Klein and just positivity, um, just exude from Mr. Klein here. So we welcome him to a different position in our school district over to a new middle school. So, congratulations and, and welcome to that new position. Mr. Klein, you want to say anything?
Thank you, Dr. Cozad Board for putting your trust in me. I'm really excited to get started. Jeff, Jenny, you set a high bar there at the middle school. Um, so I'm gonna work every day hard to make that happen. I'm gonna thank the Bellbrook team, this is, this is gonna be awesome, I'm really excited. Thank you all.
We're already starting work for next year, you and I are meeting tomorrow.
Yes, we are.
And start planning our regular.
We trade it down to five. I've heard.
All right, anything else? Uh, yeah, you got it. Pardon us for a minute.
I have four kids and so I have done my fair share of toys and um, changing batteries, so hopefully that was fairly quick there. Um, next here, seven other action items. Memorandum of Understanding with our Shrew Creek Educational Association. So recommend approval of Memorandum of Understanding with the Shrew Creek Education Association regarding the addition of two supplemental duty positions effective with a 25, 26 school year.
Some moved. Second.
Moved by Mrs. Dorn and seconded by Mrs. Anderson.
And so, this is a, um, this is actually, I'm sorry, this is three supplemental duty positions, two at BCI and one at Stephen Bell Elementary. So these are flexible supplementals. And so, this allows, um, sometimes we have, um, teachers have an idea or kids have an idea for maybe a club or an activity and we're able to provide some additional support with those areas for a club advisor or some other things that are happening in the school that maybe need a little extra attention and help. So adding these flexible supplementals will provide that extra support um, to the principals and to those clubs or activities that maybe need a little extra, little extra advisor help. And for the next couple of years at least, um, we will have, one of those supplementals at BCI will go to the chess club. So I know that's been highly successful. And so, um, we're, say rewarding that, but rewarding that, uh, you know, for next, at least for the next few years, uh, could be more than that. Um, if there's interest continues, uh, I know we have a really strong chess club there at BCI.
I personally would rather it say, you know, for a supplemental for the chess club. I love the chess club. I think it's so awesome, they've been doing it for free and, I mean, I'm totally happy to give the supplemental, they should get it. But, you know, when it's written flexible, I mean, that's money, that's gonna, it's a blank check, it's gonna be spent, I mean, forever. We're not getting it back. I'd rather it be to the chess club. And if they stop the chess club, then we stop paying for it. And if a different club comes up, we make a different supplemental for that club. I love our clubs. My daughter's in like all the clubs. But I would personally like to know what we're paying for, because we are trying to be very careful with money. So I'd rather we specifically know, hey, this is for the chess club. Personally. I mean, I want to pay for all the supplementals, I love the activities and everything, I just, I want to know what it's for.
So, so again, the, the flexible supplemental allows that, uh, from year to year, if people maybe have an idea from one year and they have a group of kids that maybe will do, are very interested in running club, they would have a running club. But maybe those kids have moved on, so the next year it would be something else. So, um, that's, that's the idea behind a flexible supplemental.
I think maybe to speak to your concern, um, we renew, when, we renew all of them. It's not like once we vote, it's there forever. Every time we renew the contract with SCA, we can pull off or remove even these flexible.
They would have to be negotiated, but yes. It could be part of negotiation.
So, so then will it be listed, these will be listed separately as to what they're being used for, do you think, or no?
They will be listed as a flexible supplemental.
As a flexible, okay.
Yep, because there's already two flexible supplementals in there. Yep, for the middle school and high school, so it's the same as that. So for example, uh, Mrs. Hill was able to provide a little piece of that for an art club and for Board at School Club. The things that have been going on anyways, but allowing some additional funds to go to those advisors that are doing those, those things. And sixth grade weren't, sixth grade run club, thank you. So, again.
So there's just no way to, I mean, make it go to the chess club, for sure? Like, I just.
I think it would have to be a specific MOU then again, wouldn't it?
Yes.
It would be hard to go back to the SCA. This just gives us the flexibility or the principals the flexibility to say, hey, this year we have students interested in this.
Right.
And, you know, I don't know.
So what has happened in the past, uh, there's, there's been specific supplementals that would go into the check, into the, into the contract and then that interest wouldn't be around anymore and then there would be another interest of something else. So, there, the, sometimes the interests shift over time. And so, then that, that supplemental is just fixed in there and we would have to negotiate that out of there. So if, if, if it is the will of the board to have a specific chess club supplemental, I would have to go back to the union, this is an MOU with them, and we would have to, to allow or to, they would have to revote that. Um, and they would have to revote that. Again, so the reason, the reason my recommendation is not to have a specific chess club in there, but for the next, at least the next couple of years, Mrs. or Dr. Monroe and I say that for the next, at least the next two years, there will be a, one of those flexible, flexible supplementals will go to the chess club. Because what sometimes happens is somebody will move on, a teacher will move on, kids aren't interested anymore, and then we're stuck with a chess club and there's not another opportunity for another club to then take over that. And so that, that's, that's the rhyme and reason behind the, the flexible supplemental.
Right. The flexible allows you to use the money for something else instead of keep paying an advisor that, to run a chess club that has two people in it. Or that. If it's in here as chess club, it will continue to be there until the teachers union gets a new contract and we negotiate it out.
So we have a lot of supplementals in the contract right now that I don't think we're using, what's Muse Machine? So are we paying people to do those?
No, we are not paying for that, so we're not filling that.
So if chess club went away, we would stop paying for it.
Correct.
And if a different club was wanted, we would, okay, add a different club.
But we'd have to.
Otherwise, that money is just gonna be spent every year, they're gonna find something, you know? Which is all, but, I mean, they're all good things, it's just we won't have, you know, it'll, you know, it'll always be spent no matter what, you know? But they're all picking good things, so I'm sure it's fine. I just, I don't like to tell our taxpayers, yeah, we just approved money to pay someone for something, whatever.
No, it, well.
I think having one or two at each building is fine.
Right.
I wouldn't want to do everything like that. But I think providing one or two at each building to provide some flexibility is appropriate.
It's interesting our principals to work with their staff to, to provide an advisor for a club that students are interested in and for them to find things to do. The, I mean, I trust my principals to be able to work on those and, and find valuable things for those. And each of them, the, each building's a little unique, they find different ways to do that, but they, they, in the end, support students in some manner. So, um, again, so if we would say just chess club, if there's no chess club anymore, then, then that, that supplemental can be shifted to something, can't be shifted to another club. Where if it's a flexible supplemental, there's no chess club anymore, then we could, we could do another club. Maybe it's running club, maybe it's checkers club, maybe it's school, Board at School Club. So, again, so if it's the, if it is the will of the board to, to want a specific chess supplemental, that wouldn't be my recommendation. But if that's the will of the board, I would have to, this would have to be voted down, I would go back to the union and um, I would work with them on that if that's the will of the board.
And ultimately, that would probably delay funding for the chess club.
But it doesn't seem like it's gonna be funded till next year.
It's for next year.
Right.
It's for next year.
I mean, I just, I do really want to be sure we're funding the chess club and it seems like you're going to, you know?
We are.
And I think if at any time we had questions about what those supplementals were going through, we could act, we could ask you at any time.
Yep, definitely. So again, um, the last meeting last month, uh, there was a couple of flexible supplementals on there for the middle school and so the art club and art club Board of School, School Board of School.
And if I remember, they were specifically listed about where they went to, like, we were given that information.
You were given the information of the, what, what building?
Right.
Not what this, not what it was specifically going to, but I can definitely provide the
I thought it listed the name and then said art club, okay.
information.
Is there a one-stop shop?
I, I said it.
You did, you did say.
I said it.
So we got that info, I just said we got that information.
You got that information.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can make sure that if the board wants to know what those are going to, definitely. But it allows flexibility at the building level for them to fund some of those activities or things that need a little extra money for staffing something. Again, if you split up four ways, you're talking about $250 for somebody that is spending a lot more time and energy than $250 worth, but it is a little, little bit of thank you to them, uh, for that extra work.
Oh, I definitely want them to get it. I absolutely love it, every club, my daughter's in all the clubs. I just wanted to make sure, you know, we know where they're going when taxpayers ask, you know, I just, I'm not just approving money to go pay someone for something, so. But I do think it's probably fine to have, you know, one or two at each building so they can keep clubs going.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's only a, a few at each building.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All right, it was moved by Mrs. Dorn, seconded by Mrs. Anderson for the passing of this memorandum of understanding. Mr. Gotham, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Four yeses.
Motion passes.
All right, um, thank you. On, on next on the Shrew Creek Elementary Facilities, so we've had the, the board, and this has been on the board agenda for quite a long time here, so I'll give a 15-second overview, um, of where we've been on Shrew Creek Elementary. So again, this is the, the, what we call the three-story down, it's the downtown Shrew Creek Elementary, so the three-story, one-story, there's an old board office, an old two-car garage, an old transportation center, and then about eight and some acres total, um, down on that campus. It is in a floodplain. Um, the one-story is currently being rented out by the Green County ESC. The three-story is being rented out by various community groups. Um, the other buildings there are being essentially used for storage. We started this conversation in October with the presentation of the board, just trying to, or just providing some information about what is down there. Um, gathered feedback, invited stakeholders that were involved, um, that, that had, that were renters or were folks that were involved with the facilities down there to the December meeting. Also had a couple, um, coffee chats, inviting the community to those. It was in the January Bridge, um, also on the January, I think it's 25th Board Meeting. Um, we had time set aside at that meeting to have feedback from, from the community. Again, we did have, uh, a few folks, groups come and talk to us. Alliance Club came in with a, a few proposals, talked to us for a few times. There were a couple of other, um, community members and/or businesses that came and talked and, and expressed some thoughts and ideas, but never really came back to the board with specific concrete ideas. And so, um, again, the, the board has had some discussions over the past few meetings. Essentially, last, uh, last meeting, which was earlier this month, essentially we, we came down, the board came down to two options. Either was, um, auctioning, um, all or part of the property downtown and go on the auction route, or selling, selling's kind of in quotes, to the city to work with their community improvement corporation to, um, to redevelop that, um, that property down there. Um, and we have also, we want to, to make sure that the Green County ESC at least has through next year, um, for that property to, to, to be in school down there. And what was the other? I get, and again, the other, the, the, this has been in our, in facilities plans for quite a long time, but really trying to head off the future liabilities as we were just, you know, listening to Mr. Eckley and his presentation of all those costs that are looming in our buildings that we are in. Those costs are looming in the building that we, in the buildings that we are not in. And at some point, those, those liabilities of hundreds of thousands of dollars, the district is going to have to pay to update, upgrade, uh, fix those facilities down there and, um, for, for facilities that we do not currently use for our, our students and/or really don't plan in the, in the, in the future to use those facilities. So, um, hopefully I've kind of set the stage a little, pretty good about, a little longer than 15 seconds, but, um, set the stage of kind of where we're at with, with everything. I don't know if anybody wants to add or if I missed something or.
I'll just, I'll maybe kick it off and then if we want to do discussion or whatever it is that we want to do. Um, I, I, I always try to figure out, how can I distill and summarize things to get down in my little tiny pea brain? Um, and I think it was said many, many months ago, you know, I, I see for myself personally, uh, two goals. One, a goal of this discussion would be, how can the school district stop losing money? Because we've been losing at least $40,000 every year on buildings that have been put to very good use and have served very good missions, but hasn't been the mission of education. So how, how can we not be losing as much money or be losing money at all? And I think goal number two, I'd like to think we all did a pretty good job, was find out what does the community want from this property? Right now, it's community-owned, taxpayer-owned property, what would they want from that? Um, and I feel like we all kind of heard a resounding unanimous, um, what, response that they want it to be something for the good of community and not maybe just necessarily thrown out to the highest bidder and lose some guidance about what could go in there, but keeping it something that, for the good of the community that they can enjoy for decades to come, so. All right, I don't, I don't know where we want to go, or we want to have discussion? So, all right, I don't, I don't know where we want to go or we want to have discussion or-
Do we need to have a motion before we discuss?
Um, I don't, I don't think so, certainly. I mean, if somebody, if somebody's ready to make a motion, we can make that at any time and that's always been the case. So if somebody's ready to make a motion, that, that can direct the way it can go.
I just wasn't sure if we needed a motion to talk.
No, I don't, I don't think so for this one. I mean, we, we can just, because we're talking, we've been talking about this since October, so. But as soon as somebody feels like they have enough information and they're ready to make a motion, then that will certainly direct the conversation.
Again, if I can also interject, so I do have a couple resolutions ready from our attorney, however, depending on whether the facilities or the campus or the buildings or the property, if it's split up into certain, like we had, we discussed as a possibility, things are split up, maybe one parcel does, is doing this, one parcel's doing that. If that's the case, then we would have some legwork to do to make that official, some surveying, some of, some of those other things, so that the resolution can read some type of tax partial number and so forth. So if that's the direction, that might need a little bit more time, even though we probably could pass a resolution saying that we want to go ahead and move that direction. But I also wanted to throw out that I do have a couple resolutions for those two options, two options of the auction and then also approving the, the sale to the city. Again, I would just also chime in that the city, through the conversations with them, is that they would be taking, we want to get rid of this property because there's a liability on our books. And so for them to take that liability on, it's got to be extremely favorable terms in their, in their minds, because they're taking on this liability, even though they're trying to redevelop with the CIC, they're taking on this future liability or maybe current liability. And so the terms of that sale would have to be extremely favorable for them to take on this future liability. Again, I don't want to speak on their behalf, but that's the information that, that they have shared informally with me. And so if we're ready at some point, then we would go to the city with, hey, this is what, this is what the board has approved, this is the direction the board wants to go, and then we would talk with the city about that particular option or options.
Okay. I know for me, the goal is to make sure that this property stays for our community. And so I think I've been very impressed with Alliance Club's presentation. I think they are very good stewards. The problem is, is we can't sell directly to them, so this would facilitate, I think, the best transfer to them at some point. And, you know, if, if I know anything, but living in this community for 37 years, if you want something done, you call the Lions, because they will make it happen. So I think that they would be the best stewards and if this, the CIC can facilitate that the quickest, most efficient legal way, then I think that would be the best option for us, just as a single board member.
Do we think, you know, it will get to the Lions Club? Am I allowed to say that? You know, if we sold the resolution to sell it to the city of Bel Brook?
Well, that, that would be, that, that's been the, the information, the presentation with the CIC is them working with the Lions Club on redevelopment on that, redevelopment of that property, correct?
Because that's, I think, what all of us hope. We all love the Lions Club Festival.
Right, right.
Well, they've been huge supporters of the community and our school. Hundreds of thousands of dollars they have donated to the school district over the past X amount of years and have been supporters for many, many years. They have donated hundreds, and I'm not joking, hundreds of thousands of dollars, as we know, just recently with the playground at BCI, but hundreds of thousands of dollars to the school district. So they have a great track record of, like Mrs. Anderson said, of getting things done, but also of supporting the community and, and the school district and having the community's best interest in mind when they do something.
So are we able to dictate, if we, if we transfer this or sell it to the city, are we able to dictate that the Lions Club will be the beneficiary or is that not something? Once, once we transfer it, it's done, it's out of our hands?
I think, I think that it's, it's out of our hands, aside from, if we make a resolution tonight to decide to go that route, that we are going to, to move in that direction vice moving to public auction, right? Really what we're, what, all we're authorizing is for the three gentlemen here in the middle to go negotiate with the city in the way that they know that we would want to go. And if they can't, if, if what they're getting back from the city is not favorable or in line with our priorities, then I presume you come back and tell us that, that, that path failed and we need to pursue a different path, right? So, I mean, could they say that they're going to do X, Y, and Z and lie in, to the extent that there are intentions that perhaps fall through? I mean, there are things they can put in the, in the sale and in the agreement and in the contract, but dictating the future sale is probably not something that they're going to be able to do, that you will then sell to a third party. But the city officials are upstanding people. They report to the same taxpayers that we report to and if they state that intention and try to do something totally different, then, then they report to the same taxpayers we do, right? So, I mean, I trust these folks to go negotiate on our behalf with them and if they reach a deal with the city that's agreeable, then I think we have to trust the city that they're going to follow through with what they said they're going to, what their intentions are. And if they don't do that, they're going to anger the residents and the residents will have their way with them, I guess.
So will we vote on the final deal or is that strictly between you guys and the city?
We would have to ratify any contract that you all negotiate, right?
I wasn't sure if we were just voting on the resolution.
I think, but perhaps not.
You would bring it back to us after that.
The, the way the resolution is, is stated right now and the way I understand it is you are authorizing myself, Mr. Gotham, and, and Mr. Kinsey to negotiate with the city and we would find the best deal with, with them. Now, in this resolution, there is an amount of, there is a space for amount of money. So if we don't know amount of money, that could be something we could come back and then the board could approve that, okay, it was this amount of money that we're selling them to. And there also is a, I know Mr. Kinsey has brought up, I think, in the past about, you know, at the end of the day, if there is money still in the coffers or something, you know, as they've done this, that they are, they aren't, that they would give that money back as profits back to the school district. That is in here as it, as it reads now. But you are authorizing us three to go and negotiate with them and I guess we could come back with the actual amount of money. We could leave the money part out and then come back with, hey, this is what the amount of money was we agreed upon.
And I'm sorry, does that have to happen or is that just an option? Just curious, like-
The money part? I mean, if we-
I guess, to, to Mrs. Anderson's point, I'm not even super clear. Is this kind of the final vote or this is just the vote to go negotiate and then you come back for the final vote?
That was my question.
Yeah, so the way this is written now, this is the final vote.
Okay.
Now, if we want to maybe take a, you know, part of this and just do a resolution to, as I read a section two here, that essentially you're authorizing us three to go and then we would come back to the board with the final deal. If the board is more comfortable with that, we can do that also.
I feel like Amit has something to say.
If I may-
Go ahead.
And I was going to read the motion, the resolution again, but if I may, the board has to vote on the sale of the building.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, like, three of us can, three of us can go and, you know, come up with an amount, say, hey, this is what we negotiated, but the final vote has to be the board.
That's what I, that's what I thought, it would have to be two separate votes.
Yes. This is authorizing us to go and then there'll be another vote for the formal sale.
Okay. Is that how the resolution reads currently or do you feel like Dr. Cozette, it doesn't read like that?
No, it reads, essentially, this is the final document.
And, and I think it'll be important, if somebody decides to make a motion, we will read, let's, let's read the whole thing for everybody, but if we, yeah, because that's probably important.
But again, I think if, if the board would want to just, hey, come back, go negotiate, we're, we're going with this option, go negotiate with them and come back and then we would essentially, this would be the final resolution with, this is the amount of money, this is the other parts of the deal and so forth, and then the board finalizes that.
Yeah.
If the board is more comfortable with that. But I think there has to be maybe some possible parameters unless, or some thoughts, or it's going to be a lot of back and forth of us going to, coming and saying, okay, this is what we, this is what we came up with, do you approve this? No. Okay, then we got to go back to them and then say, okay, we want to do this. And so that's why there's the, the, the board giving the three of us the ability to negotiate on, on part, on behalf of the board, so, because that back and forth could get real cumbersome if it can only be done at council meetings or board meetings and so forth and then we're going to be in November before we get something figured out.
And I'm totally fine with that, that I would trust the three, like, Mike's there as a representative of all of us. I think he understands our priorities and I think the other four of us, our priorities are all generally aligned. I'm, I'm fine with that. I think perhaps the motion tonight would be all of the whereas's in this draft and section two.
Yeah.
And then we come back and once you have negotiated, we add one, three, and four.
Yeah.
Does that, does that jive with your understanding?
Amit, I'm with that. Yeah, yeah. Is there anything else of, within section one that needs to be considered or thought about or, you know, as part of our negotiations of, please keep this in mind or is it the Lions Club piece, maybe?
I really hope it ends up with the Lions Club and I'm also concerned about the school, Green County ESC. I went there on Monday and toured the building. They love it, they want to buy it, they want us to sell them their school. So, I mean, I would happily do that, but I don't know how, I know that's an extra step, we have to portion it off, but boy, they want that school. And, you know, there are four of our students there who are graduating this year with us who just go to school there. And so they're certainly using it. Now granted, it's not a beautiful building. So I, I could see, understand how the city taking it on would have more options, you know, if they didn't, if that building wasn't there, but they may decide to sell it to the school as well, you know, I don't know. I just, you know, I certainly want, I mean, I'd happily sell that section to the school. But if not, I certainly want something in the contract that they get to stay there next year, because it's too late for them to find somewhere for next year.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that has to be in our resolution, though. I think that has to be in the minds of the three of them that are going to negotiate.
Correct.
The priority that to keep the ESC in the building for at lea, for a minimum of at least one year.
Right.
Or one school year.
Right.
That, something to the effect of if, for some reason, the city ends up profiting on this whole deal after everything is done and all dust is settled and all things have changed hands, that we share in a percentage of that profit in whatever way you can negotiate. And that there's at least limitations on what they can do with, like, I don't think we can direct them what they can do, but I think we can, I think we can put some stipulations around, you can't make this a low-income housing development or something. That has to be whatever, maintained for the general benefit and then the-
Do we still have any current tenants in that three-story?
Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the church is still there. Mr. Eckley, anybody, anything else? I think goes with the three. Garden Club.
Is the radio-
Ham radio still there? Yes, yeah, so.
So is there going to be like a reasonable, if we sign this resolution tonight, is there a reasonable amount of time that they will be given?
Well, the, the city could decide that they want to keep the, the three-story.
Right, right. I just don't want this resolution to happen tonight and they're out of a place on Monday, you know, next week.
No, we're already working.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I, I think, and that would be part of the negotiation, we'd work with them. And we have places in our school that we've already-
Okay.
Already had, yeah. Yep. And ham radio.
Okay.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I know it's not our legal responsibility to do that, but I want to make sure we're doing the right thing. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So is anyone besides me interested in selling to the, the school to the school or do we all, do you all just put, keep it in one piece and let the city deal with it?
I prefer to keep it clean, because I think there's a very good chance that blows up the whole deal.
Okay, yeah.
That's my take.
And it's very possible it will still go, I mean, it's very possible that the city may decide to do that. We don't, you know? But they'll be safe for at least another, another school year.
That'd be part of it, yep.
I can see that, because you just don't know.
Are we good to, do you like me to motion this? Is that where we at? Are we, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I think this, the, the resolution here, it wouldn't be approving the sale of real property, it would be approving-
The negotiation?
The negotiation of real property, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Right.
So I'm going to go ahead and read then. So I'm going to make a motion for, to approve the negotiation for the sale of real property, whereas the Board of Education of Bel Brook local, Bel Brook Sugar Creek Local School District is the owner of certain real property located at 51 Southeast Street in the city of Bel Brook, Green County, Ohio, known as parcel tax number as stated, containing approximately 8.4173 acres, known as and referred to as, and my screen went away, stand by.
Paper?
Perfect. Thank you. Then referred to as Sugar Creek Elementary Property, whereas Sugar Creek Elementary Property, which exceeds $10,000 in value and is no longer needed for school purposes and the board has no present or probable future need to use the property for those purposes, whereas no community schools, college preparatory schools, or STEM schools are located within the territory of the school district and therefore it is not required for the property to be offered to any governing authority of such entity pursuant to our C-sections 3313.41, 3313.411, 3313.412, or 3313.413. Whereas pursuant to our C. 3313.41C, the board may sell the Sugar Creek Elementary Property to any subdivision defined in revised code 5705.01 without conducting public auction and whereas the city of Bel Brook, Ohio, in which the Sugar Creek Elementary Property is located and is chartered, is a chartered municipality and qualifies as a subdivision identified in our C. 5705.01. And whereas the Board of Education of Bel Brook Sugar Creek Local School District desires to sell the Sugar Creek Elementary Property to the city of Bel Brook, Ohio, on the terms and conditions outlined herein. Now therefore be it resolved that, and I'm skipping down to section two of this draft, Amit, superintendent, treasurer, and/or board president are hereby authorized and directed to do all things necessary and consistent with this resolution, including but not limited to engaging in good faith negotiations of the specific terms for the sale of the Sugar Creek-
Sorry.
-elementary property to the city of Bel Brook, so long as those terms are consistent with this resolution, this authority includes the payment of fees to retain a real estate professional and/or legal professionals to prepare necessary documents.
Second?
Thank you.
Okay, so moved by Mrs. Dorn, seconded by Mrs. Anderson of this resolution as written excluding, wait, I'm sorry, what, what, what did you read? You read two?
Section two.
Section two.
I read two, but I did remove a word toward the end because it was-
So excluding section one.
Correct.
Excluding section three and excluding- Excluding section three, and excluding section four. Those will come back for a final vote. Did I get that right? All right? So it's been moved and seconded. Does anybody want to have any discussion on that? And you got down what it is that we're voting on?
Yep.
No discussion? Well, I just want to say quickly to explain what my vote's going to be here in a second. We've been talking about this since October. Right around that timeframe, I contacted our lawyer very, very early in the process and wanted to get some counsel, hey, I am a Lions Club member. So I wanted to be very clear about potential conflicts of interest, advice that she had about how to navigate this. She assured me that even though I am a Bel Brook Lion, it is not a conflict of interest to participate, to participate in this decision. However, just because I want to make sure that it's very clear how seriously we all should take ethical responsibilities, I plan to abstain. Any other comments? All right, please call a roll.
Mr. Kinsey?
I abstain.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Three yeses, one abstain.
All right, motion passes. What's next?
All right, thank you. Topics for the May 5th, 2025 joint meeting with the township, city, Parks, and us. I don't think there's anybody else, that's it.
I would like to hear an update on the Veterans Memorial going in. I can see they're doing work. Is it, they had mentioned, I think, June 6th as a planned completion date? I'm curious if they're still on track and if they need anything from the school before students are out for the summer, things like, are you wanting the honor guard? Are you wanting a choir or a band or, I don't know what? But probably better to know now than June 5th.
Okay.
Trying to think of other...
Want to touch base on SRO again?
I feel like that's something we should just make a habit of every time touching base on, because it's kind of a joint program that we all finance. Anything else? Was there anything else from Safety Committee that needs to, like, be, anything else brought up as a roadway thing or?
I don't think so.
I'm sure we could all email Dr. Kozad if we think of anything else.
Yeah, so the reason for the ask is because since it's a special meeting, we have to put topics that we are going to discuss on the special meeting notice. Now, obviously, we can't control what the other entities discuss, that is, you know, their part, but, so we need at least some items that we plan on discussing so that we can put that in the meeting notice. So if you want to, you know, wait through the weekend and let me know by Monday morning, and that way we can put the notice out on Monday morning, or Monday. If you'd like to do that, unless you don't have any other thoughts, and then I can just put it out tomorrow, but whatever you'd like.
It'd be worth talking about our financial, you know, potential percentage of savings.
Sure. Sure.
Sugar Creek Elementary is kind of an obvious one. I mean, at least discuss, like...
Where we're at.
How, like, how or when are you all going to negotiate or meet or whatnot?
Yep.
And maybe some of those prior, those informal priorities that we've shared here? I mean, we've already shared them publicly, so it's not like we're going to ruin your negotiation by showing your hand. And perhaps want to, something about what I brought up with Mr. O'Malley about, we talked last time about potential for encouraging students to pursue careers in law enforcement or fire service.
Yeah, some of the things that were discussed were the middle school ball fields. I'm not sure what that, trying to remember what that was about. It was something with Lions Club using them or somebody using them, schedule?
Yeah, because I think the condensed schedule that he said.
The schedule was going to, I mean, that's probably OBE at this point, or they hopefully have figured it out by now, because seasons are underway.
Yeah, I didn't hear anything from them.
I don't know if there's any other sports development behind the middle school happening.
I know that there was, AED was brought up, we do have that at the middle school. And then lacrosse fields. I know we are working on that. Do you have an update on that, Mrs. Hill? But I know we were, I know Mr. Killen, that was his project. He was, he had met with the Parks and Mr. Odell, and they were working on it. So I think the plan was to try to do something and have it ready by possibly fall for football and then spring for lacrosse fields, next spring, because we had to kind of even things out and plant some seed and so forth. So they were working on that. They were actually working on it before the meeting the other month, but that is being worked on.
Regarding the, backing up the law enforcement, fire service thing, is a way to go about that, maybe we bring, hey, here's a name of one or two folks from our district who we're willing to put forth to be on a committee with all of you, or to be our appointment to communicate with.
I guess is, what is the end goal of that?
I think the end goal is to, for, for the township and the city to provide a path for local students to continue serving locally. And that us to provide them access to our students to try to foster that as a career path. So maybe in conjunction with the Career Center, if they're interested in playing along, I don't know.
I mean, that's something that we could do as administration and Mrs. Gann and try to get with the Career Center to try to discuss that.
Well, I think our HOSA group would be, I mean, that would feed directly into the EMS portion, probably, I mean, as one little caveat of medicine.
Yep, it could. Okay.
Just to try to take it a step from idea to, like, okay, who can, whatever, if we want to have a board member that's kind of part of that committee, that's also fine. But to try to encourage them to put someone forth to discuss it, too. Everyone acted like they thought it was great and they wanted to do it, but, so now what?
Right.
Like, what makes it happen?
Okay. Okay, I'll gather some thoughts for some people. Okay.
Anything else?
Do you want me to provide you some time to think of additional things? Or are we ready to post that tomorrow? Do you want to wait till Monday to post that?
How early does it need to be posted?
I mean, next Monday would be fine. Forty-eight hours, I believe, so we got time. So next Monday is plenty. That's, next Monday is what? I don't know, 28th or something. So next Monday would be fine. Want to wait till Monday? Let me know by Monday for other things? Maybe Monday by noon? That'd be okay? Okay.
Anything else?
The only other thing is, I just wanted to mention that traditionally, we, since these are our meetings, we live stream our meetings here, but since this is not officially our meeting, it is the township's meeting, they're hosting. And I talked with them, they don't, they don't live stream their, their, their meetings. So at this point, we weren't going to plan on live streaming our meeting, just because it's their meeting and we're at their place.
It seems to make sense. You play by the home field rules, however, however they do it.
Just wanted to make people aware of that and give some...
But we'll still, like, post minutes and things like that.
Yeah, we have, sure, sure.
Right, so I just want to be sure.
On the meeting announcement, can we, I assume we'll make, can we make sure that on the meeting announcement, that's obvious?
Yep, put that on there, yep.
So that people don't plan on tuning in from home? Like, if you want to hear what's going on?
Sure.
Come.
Put that on the announcement, yep, I will make, yep, thank you for that reminder.
Anything else? I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Mrs. Dorn and then Mrs. Anderson, please call a roll.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Four yeses.
We are adjourned at 9:09 PM. Thanks, everybody, for sticking with us. Thanks for coming.